I have to use my gavel for the first time. I don't need it in the other room. This room is a lot more lively and a lot of hospitality going. Is that better, Delia? Can you hear me okay? I will, I'll work on that. There we go. Good afternoon. We are calling the regular meeting of the Delmar College Board of Regents to order at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, November 8th. We are at our new Oso Creek campus in our Culinary Arts Building. This is the Trace Grace Community Room, and we are very happy to be meeting here for the first time. I want to give a special shout out and thank you to our facilities personnel for moving all the furniture and getting everything set up for us, and to our IT group for getting all of the technology put together. In the President's Office, Ms. Pettis and Dr. Eskamia, thank you very much for your work in getting this location put together for us today. We're very happy to be here. I'm going to call a roll to establish our quorum. Dr. Adami?
Here.
Regent Avrat?
Here.
Regent Bennett could not be with us today. Regent Garza?
Here.
Regent Hutchison?
Here.
Regent Kelly?
Here.
Dr. Turner is, we're not sure if she's going to be able to join us or not. She may be running late. Dr. Villarreal?
Here.
I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Thank you all very much for being here today. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Regent Hutchison, would you lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would all please join me in reading our Delmar College Vision Statement. It is located on the screens around the room. "Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities." Delmar College will be streaming our live audio and video from the official Board of Regents meetings on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute. We now have the opportunity for anyone to address the board on any item not on the agenda. Our general public comment, is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none, we will move into our recognitions for the day. We'll begin, Ms. Keys is going to help us recognize Dr. Leonard Rivera.
Thank you very much. Here, there we go. Thank you very much, Regents, and good afternoon. It's my pleasure to recognize Dr. Leonard Rivera, Dean of Continuing Education and Off-Campus Programs, and Rachel Benavides, Director of Adult Education Initiatives, and the entire Continuing Education Team for receiving the coveted Stars Award from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. This award is in recognition of providing exceptional contributions to the one or more goals of the new strategic plan, building a talent-strong Texas. Specifically, the Continuing Education Team under the leadership of Dr. Rivera and Ms. Benavides highlighted their work in the Texas Re-Skill and Upskill Through Education Initiative in utilizing the true grant funds of over $530,000. Although with other community, along with other community partners such as Workforce Solutions of the Coastal Bend and under the leadership of Ken Trevino and Alba Silvas, together they created post-secondary credentials of value for local targeted occupations in the workforce. This resulted in the redesign and alignment of short-term credentials that prepared continuing education students for employment and increased student accessibility to credit courses. These stackable courses take an industry-based credential and open the door for students to progress to Level 1 Certificate and Associate's Degrees. They will continue with the Higher Education Conference in Austin this December and be recognized there by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Rivera and Ms. Benavides and their team, and would they please come forward? Congratulations, Leonard. Now, this has been a lot of hard work, and Ms. Benavides and some other team members. Come on up. Can Ms. Silva?
Say hello to everybody.
Come up, come up, come up.
Get the team up there, absolutely. So while you're taking the picture, the, many of the Regents will be in attendance at the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Leadership Conference, and it's going to give us a great thrill to be able to applaud the work of our continuing education and off-campus programming. Thank you very much for your hard work and for helping us recognize the great work that the Delmar College is doing. Please, Dr. Rivera, say a few words.
Well, thank you, Regent. I appreciate that. Obviously, we've put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this, and, you know, it's the culmination of the folks that are standing right behind me that have made this possible. You know, I have a great boss, Ms. Keys, great president, Dr. Eskamia, great board. I mean, obviously, it takes everyone and anyone on this college campus to make what we did today possible. And I want to recognize a great team, a great CE team, a great partnership. Ms. Alba Silvas recognizing the Workforce Solutions of Coastal Bend. We're in tandem with them at every juncture, working with industry, really creating these types of innovative programs in order to put people to work, you know, and that's what Delmar's about, is about getting them work-ready, and we're just having to be doing it quicker than the average person. And we're doing it within months as opposed to doing it in years. And that makes a big difference, because when people are hungry, they're hungry today. They're not hungry a year or two years from now. They're hungry today. And this is what this team is about, putting people to work and listening and advising them and putting the love and care that it takes to make, you know, their dreams come true. So I want to recognize my team, every single one of them, from the bottom of my heart, as well as the Dr. Halcom and her faculty. I'm going to be honest with you, the faculty are, play a big instrumental role in allowing this to even take place. So, Dr. Halcom, thank you so much, and your faculty, the deans, the chairs that report to you. This could not be possible if it weren't for the cooperation of the faculty and the chairs that we have. And then lastly, I also want to recognize Patricia Dominguez with our Student Support Services and everyone that she employs and oversees. Again, it's really a community award, in my opinion, and so I want to thank her for everything that she does to support CE, and every day she's doing something that makes my life and our life easier. And so I have a whole saying, it's my college, it's our, you know, it's really your college and it's our college, and so this is a community college, and thank you so much for allowing us to be here today and joining you all in this celebration. So, thank you all so much. Thank you, all team.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. As a, I'm going to take a little point of privilege here. I want to connect the dots for folks. The true initiative that was referenced in this, in this grant award was about upskilling and reskilling through some funding that was acquired during the last legislative session through the Coordinating Board. The success of that program, what we did here at Delmar College, what other colleges around the state were able to do with that true initiative, is quite frankly what led to one of the major recommendations in the Community College Finance Commission recommendations. Dr. Eskamia was able to chair the Workforce Program, the Workforce Task Group, as part of that commission's work, and because of the success of programs like this, we've been able to include this kind of reskilling and upskilling specific funding in the commission's recommendations. So don't ever doubt that what you do with your individual students and in each classroom can actually affect statewide policy. This is a perfect example of where success in these kinds of programs has led directly to a state recommendation that is going to increase funding for these kind of programs statewide. So again, our applause to you. Absolutely.
Just one thing to add to that. I can't tell you how many times I was in Austin working on the commission, and I'd call up Leonard, "Leonard, tell me what to do here. I don't know what this means. Do I need to go left, right? What do I need?" And Leonard would write me a little prescription over the phone, and I would go back and I would say, "This is the way it needs to be." And in my head, that's what Leonard told me we needed to do. So, I mean, this is, this is, this is actually the way statewide policy and law is crafted, okay? Anyway, Leonard, Leonard, thanks for your leadership, and Patricia, and to the team and everybody. Thank you, everyone, faculty, staff, everyone who contributed to this. Appreciate it.
Great job. Next, we're going to hear from Ms. Mary McQueen about an award for our College Relations Program from the National Council for Marketing and Public Relations.
You know, we're so honored to have so many great stories at Delmar College, but those stories could not be heard without the incredible technicians and craftsmen who create the storyboards that actually share some of the successes and the wonderful things that we do here at Delmar College, and that's what the College Relations Office is all about, sharing those stories in the multitude of streams that are available right now. So I want to recognize the College Relations Team, and particularly Monica Benavides, who is our Creative Service Manager. She won eight medallions at the National Council for Marketing and Public Relations, including one that was the Oso Creek brochure, that they had them downstairs, but they don't have them anymore. I was going to show you, but it's, it's a great opportunity. The images and the story and the pieces that we have to share with the public is a great way to share what it is that Delmar College is all about, and I am so honored to be part of, at least temporarily, this team that is doing the incredible work. I'd like all the members of the College Relations Team that's here, and particularly Monica, to come up and get some recognition. Thank you, Leonard. He's Johnny on the spot. So this is, this is the Oso Creek brochure, which is one of the ones that won a gold medallion, and the cool thing about this one is it has all the programs and the expected salaries, and it really is a marketing to the students to say, "This is what's possible, and here's some avenues that you can look at." So I, we're really excited.
Monica, would you like to say something, please?
Oh, a lot of these awards were also for our rebranding, which was such an honor to get to do, albeit challenging during a pandemic with 27 focus groups, but truly is an honor to get to be creative and have fun and showcase all of the amazing things that Delmar College has to offer to everyone. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I know there's a much bigger team back at the office. Please tell them congratulations for us as well. Next, we will have our Student Success Report. Patricia Benavides-Dominguez is going to talk to us about Project Senda.
Good afternoon. Project Senda, as you know, is a Title V grant that we, we're in year three of that grant. Project Senda is a set of interventions intended to expand the number of Hispanic and low-income students attaining a post-secondary degree and participating in a growing regional economy. The overall goal is to ensure the implementation of advising best practices across Delmar College. Part of the process is a two-tiered Certified Advising Course, which enhances the skillset of the participants and Delmar College advising processes and procedures. To date, 107 unique faculty and staff have participated in course offerings. With these results, the institution is expected to continue advising best practices as an outcome of the training received by both faculty and staff. Ultimately, the training will assist the institution in continuing to meet objectives set forth by the project long after the grant cycle has ended. Years one through three, I'm sorry, we're in year four. We've already done one through three. Years one and three of the Project Senda have been deemed successful by external evaluators, and the grant remains on target to meet its objectives. There will be, there will be a 16% increase in annual number of Hispanic students earning an associate's degree from 863 students in 2018 to 1,000 in 2023 is our goal. The target for 2021 reported year was 925, and the actual number earned by Hispanic students was 947. So we are ahead of our goal. There will be a 19% increase in the three-year graduation rates of Hispanic students from 10.9 in 2017 to 13% in 2023, and right now, our, we are at 11.5 in our actual percentage. We, are we, I'm sorry, we, we're going for 11.5, and our actual percentage for 2020-21 is 14.2. The annual number of Hispanic graduates successfully transferred to baccalaureate programs will increase from 178 in 2016 to 300 in 2023. The actual target for the reporting year of 2020-21, the reported year was, the reporting for that year was 2025, and our actual number was 244. So we are improving on all our metrics. For success points, in this case, in following the grant, the goal is to have lower numbers in all those categories. There will be a 4% decrease in the average credits taken to degree completion, and as you know, back in 2018, we started at 93 hours for degree completion, and now we're at 89. There will be a 9% decrease in the average student debt from 12,059 in 2018, and now our number is at 11,197. And then for our, there will be an 8% decrease in the average time to degree completion. We started out at 5.1 years in 2018, and now for the 2020-2021, we are, our number is actual, is actually at 4.9. So these grant objectives highlight key wins in the Project Senda and Delmar College. All data was collected in conjunction with the Delmar Office of Institutional Research and the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. Additionally, another key milestone in the project has, has implemented a resource request form that is available to all faculty and staff to assist with expenses related to technology, professional development, office supplies. As it's, as, as of its implementation in April 2022, the program has fielded over 50 requests totaling over $100,000. These monies assist the college in the continuing efforts of student success, and this would not be possible without David Barretta, our, our grant director, and Letitia Wilson, our Director of Advising Initiatives. Thank you.
Comments? Dr. Eskamia, any questions from board members? From Ms. Benavides?
Thank you.
I'll just, I may, if I may. So this, this program is in its fourth year now as a Title V grant from, from the U.S. Department of Ed, and so as such, this is a way of leveraging resources that we'd already had. We've been gaining momentum internally, and I'd like to thank Letitia and all the others out there that are, that are, that are on that, in a day-to-day, on a day-to-day basis are working with our own faculty and staff to train them to, to, to improve their advising. We've been talking about elevating advising here for several years, and this is, this grant is really leveraging. If there's one thing it's leveraging more than anything, it's our capabilities and overall implementation of advising for students. This is a relatively small amount of money. It's not a very big grant, but it's a very powerful grant. That's the other thing about it. It's not like it's tens of millions of dollars or anything, but it is, it's a, it goes to show that, that our people, again, are our greatest assets, and thank you so much, everybody, for, who's contributed to this. Congratulations to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Since I don't have my little screen up here today, if you do want to jump in, please jump in. Moving on to our Regents Reports, Dr. Eskamia and I wanted to provide you with an overview of the recommendations that have come out from the Texas Commission on Community College Finance. First and foremost, thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for covering the expenses for Dr. Eskamia and I, the time for him and the expenses for both of us to go to Austin on a regular basis and to participate in the commission's work. It was very, very, very meaningful work, and we're excited about where we are. The recommendations were voted on at our October 17th meeting and passed unanimously from the commission. There was one slight change that is captured in, in this deck that you see today. The actual final report has been given in final form, but not a formatted version, we understand, to the governor, the speaker, and the lieutenant governor, and we're waiting on the final formatted version of the report to be available publicly, which we expect literally any day now. As a side note for those in the audience, Dr. Harrison Keller, the Commissioner for Higher Education, is going to be in Corpus Christi tomorrow to meet with a group of South Texas presidents and some trustees who are joining us in a workshop session to discuss these recommendations and do a Q and A with those college presidents and trustees from throughout the South Texas region. So we're excited that, that Delmar College has had such an opportunity to be in a prominent role. I'm going to let Dr. Eskamia kind of take the lead on going through the recommendations, and I'll provide color commentary, as I am prone to do.
So I'm going to go ahead and just use the screen behind me, so pardon my left shoulder. There's three primary pillars that have really been developed to, to stand up the recommendations across the state. Now, what I want to begin with is saying that, that we still have to get these recommendations through the legislative process. The good news, the great news is that this is all, this has all been vetted by way of the State Higher Education Coordinator, Higher Ed Commissioner Harrison Keller, been vetted by he and his staff, by him and his staff, and taken through to the leadership of the state. So far, so good. And so the three pillars are mainly around state funding for outcomes. Currently, our funding, I'm going to move quickly through this. So currently, our appropriations are about round numbers, a little bit less than 20% coming from the state. 80% of that bucket of money is, is really on inputs, and it's what we're going to be talking about here a little bit. It's all based on enrollment, okay? Things are going to flip according to this model, and we're going to be moving from the appropriations bucket of dollars, about 80% on inputs, moving to about 90% on outcomes, okay? And it's going to be broken down in a lot of detail, and why, why I'm so glad to see all the faces in here. We're going to have a staff meeting this weekend, or this week, not the weekend, Friday. I'm not going to be here this weekend, and, and, and good luck if you are. And it's because I need you all to learn this, because this is going to put the, the report that we're about to disseminate to the Regents on its ear, maybe, and it's going to flip. Things are going to change. Our roles are going to change. Our lenses are going to change on how we see the outcomes. Next slide, please. So affordability of students. I have never, in my career, seen so much effort, intent, and goodwill focused at the affordability factor for students. Everything in the old days, I'm just going to call them the old days, because I'm hoping they're behind us, was always focused on merit-based. Well, when you're talking about students of need, and if you're just talking about the community college student, and you're talking about need-based versus merit-based, you put all your buckets over here, guess who you're leaving out? Everybody over here, right? I'm preaching to the choir. I get it. But affordability, more than ever, is going to be focused on our students, namely through the TEOG, grants being given more balance to them. I think on average, right now, there's about 20, there's a 27% number of eligibility, of students eligible, eligible that are actually receiving those dollars, to about 70% of those eligible. The other piece of all that is the financial aid, financial support for dual-credit students coming from the state, to a, to a maximum level of tuition allowable and so forth. I'm seeing the, the quiet applause out there. I think we all should be on our feet yelling right now, but hold on, hold on tight. So, so affordability for the first time, like never before, I should say, not the first time, but like never before is the second pillar that's going to be afforded to our students. Next slide, please. Continuing with the third part of, of all of that is, is a, is a component of work-based learning. There's going to be a pot of dollars proposed for students out there, is going to be especially important on our, our CE and CTE, and who knows what all aspects of our colleges, that companies and entities can go after to, to really bolster our internships and, and apprenticeships, and what are the other ships we're needing to, work-based learning, otherwise work-based learning kinds of things, contextualized learning with some money behind it for, for, for that particular part of the, the program. Next slide, please. And then investment in capacity. You know, we've been very blessed here at Delmar College to be, to live in, in this community and to have the support of, of our, of our board, and I'm, and I'm just going to say, in our previous iterations of our board, to, to support us and make sure that we have, we have a strong footing. Not all colleges do. More than half the community colleges out there are deemed medium to small colleges, and they're very vulnerable. And maybe if you've ever worked at a small college, I have in another state, but I'm just saying, it doesn't matter whether you're in Texas or Illinois, when you're working at a small college, you always feel like you're threatened, and so the dollars that are going to be used for, for, for these smaller colleges are going to help them, not only in the way of, of high-demand fields and, and programs that are, that are, that'll be conducive to their, but, but through shared services and startup seed dollars and the like. So this is really aimed, this third piece is really aimed at, at investing into the smaller colleges and stabilizing them. Of course, we, we can all benefit from the, from the high-demand fields, the stand-up programs readily and so forth. So there'll be some buckets of dollars for some new programs in small colleges, is what that's really about. I think that, that's, that's the essence of what we're talking about. This last one, this is the, this is the one, Leonard. So what we want, the slide, let me tie something together to, to our first award. I'm getting all the nods. They're like, "Mark, we already understand. We know this, right?" I get that, Jeanette. I see you, I see you smiling back there. So, but convertible and stackable credentials. You know, this is what it's all about. So guess who the state was modeling all the way through this to make, to make this final component of the, of the third leg of the stool, if you will? They were modeling us. That's why we got the award. There's, that's not a coincidence, right? And I was serious when I was calling Leonard from the Capitol and other places, saying, "Tell me more about these, these, the nuances of these convertible and stackable credentials that be supported by these investments, and there's more dollars." All this to say, good job to the team and all that. I think that should be, that should be it. Thanks, Zach. All this to say, this, this effort, again, has to go through the legislative process. We'll be asking some of you all to either go and/or participate and testify and the like. Right now, on the table is 650 million new dollars for community colleges. That is the biggest investment, and that's, you know, over a biennium and so forth, but, you know, it is the largest investment that has frankly ever been, at one time, ever been considered, and that's the amount of money that's being put behind these three, these three pillars of our plan. Adam, chair?
So my, my color commentary is going to go back to the first, the first slide on state funding for outcomes. To me, the critical piece, there's, there's a couple of critical pieces in this slide that I, that I want to make sure are not overlooked. One is the, the statement that this is going to be a dynamic funding model. So as opposed to colleges competing for a set pie that is relatively the same every biennium, we will truly be competing with ourselves on outcomes-based funding. The funding required will be based on the outcomes we achieve. So the dollars will go up or down based on our outcomes. So I think that's, that's a really critical piece, is this is a dynamic formula. The other piece that, that I think is really important is in those smaller bullet points. We're not just counting traditional academic programs. This is going to be credentials of value, including degrees, certificates, and other credentials from credit and non-credit programs. The state is finally going to be recognizing in our funding model the breadth of what community colleges have been, have been doing across the state since our existence. And so I think there's a, there's a very exciting component to that, that there is a, there's a recognition of both the credit and non-credit programs. We're going to get, we're going to get credit for our dual-credit courses, and we're also going to get credit for students who transfer even without a degree. We, we know that we have about 17, 15 to 1800, somewhere in that, 17, yeah, 1500 to 1800 a year. about 17, 15 to 1800, somewhere in that, yeah, 1500 to 1800 a year, that transfer to four-year institutions from Delmar College without a degree. So, we will get credit for those as well. So, I think there's a real opportunity for colleges to be able to truly represent to the legislature the successes that we have for the variety of students and for students who come to us with different, different choices around what they want to do and need to do in their higher education and post-secondary learning. So, I'm just really thrilled that we were able to be a part of that.
Yeah. That was another one, and I apologize for missing that one, but I'm glad you caught that one, Madam Chair, because that is a big one. You know, for Delmar College, for over 10 years, has been a leader in that regard. Again, going out there and valuing what the community valued in terms of asking from their college. You know, the folks were out there saying, we just need short-term certificates. We just need this to get our foothold. And those short-term certificates, we've been at the forefront of that conversation for a long while. And so, now, of course, when I was on the, as lead of the workforce portion of this, of this commission, you can bet that I was hooping and hollering. And I also have Dr. Brenda Kay, who's president of Kilgore College, who's very aggressive with C E as well, helping me with all this. And so, I've got to give a shout out to my colleague there. I call her my Brenda, my sister Brenda over there. And so, for the state to see credit and C E, and we can't call it non-credit anymore, we're going to, I'm also got the group, getting those nods there, yeah? So, we're getting, we're working on a marketing, a rebranding of non-credit, because it turns people off really bad. And so, to be, their words, not mine, agnostic of the two in terms of finance and recognizing and the like, is a whole new sea change. And already, when I was talking about this, I'll just add this, regions, when we were in New York the other day at the trustees conference, I was talking about this to other colleagues from other states. They were, they were getting all excited about, about our plan, and a lot of people are watching the state of Texas. So, taking it back from our local conversation, from our teams, to now nationwide conversations where people are asking, hey, we want to be like Texas, what they really mean is they want to be like Delmar College. Thank you.
That's right, yay. Questions? Region Kelly.
Okay. And I saw on there, or I thought I heard someone say scholarship money for dual-credit students. So, now, high school kids will get help with?
Yes. So, there is a large, there's quite a bit of discussion around expanding dual-credit opportunities throughout the state. Urban schools have, and schools that are in close proximity to community colleges have stronger dual-credit programs because of physical proximity. How do we expand dual-credit opportunities to other high school students across the state? And so, there, the idea that the state would come in through a cooperative with T E A and the coordinating board to offer those scholarships. In order to be eligible for a scholarship, the college would have to agree to a maximum tuition rate, so that the students then, the state's not funding some exorbitant dual-credit fee, just because a local college wants to set an exorbitant dual-credit fee. But there, so there would be a maximum tuition that would be allocated. But this would flow through the community colleges to the high school students.
So, it'd be administered by the college, not the school districts?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. But with the idea of expanding, and expanding both within the current, the current high schools that are offering dual-credit to expand to other students who can't afford it right now, but also expand the number of high schools throughout the state that can offer dual-credit.
That was all predicated on the idea, on the understanding of all the completions of dual-credit was the balance, there was an imbalance there of students of need who were actually receiving or accessing dual-credit less than students who did not have the same economic needs. So, it's a balancing, again, going towards a need-based thing. It'll balance. It's not, it's currently imbalanced and is designed to bring equilibrium to those populations.
Well, and later this afternoon, we're going to see our report on how many kids actually graduate from high school with college degrees or certifications, and how many accomplish it within a year or two. So, we can certainly see the value of the program.
Absolutely.
Other comments or questions? Feel free to, when you, we'll send out the final report as soon as it's available, and we know there's going to be a lot of discussion, as Dr. Eskimia said, throughout the next six months, eight months to get to the end of the legislative session. What the legislature does with it, how the bills are actually written, I think it's going to be a series of bills, not one omnibus bill. We could be surprised by that. But we do have to look at the legislative process to make sure that in making the sausage, all of the ingredients that we want in it are still there at the end, and things that we don't want in it are not added. For those who like to use the analogy of the legislatures like making sausage. All right. For those of us who attended the Association of Community College Trustees Annual Congress in New York, we have an opportunity to share verbally things that you have learned. If there are handouts or presentations that you would like distributed to your fellow colleagues, please get those to Delia, and she'll email them out to all of our trustees. But we have an opportunity for Bill and Dr. Adami, myself, and Mr. Garza to share what we learned. Who wants to go first? Bill?
I'll go first. And I want to start by congratulating our staff and faculty. I don't know how many sessions I sat through where one college or another is telling us about the innovative program or ideas that they've implemented and thinking, we already do that. And it happened over and over again. So, we need to congratulate ourselves and recognize how innovative we've already been. Now, one program that did catch my attention was in a presentation from Fox Valley Technical College. And they had a program called Strategic Investments. And I'm glad that Mary McQueen is here, because it's, it, the way it was described, it sounds like how K through 12 foundations are, or school districts use their foundations, where faculty or even community partners, if they come up with an idea, an innovative idea, they can write a grant application and the college, now, Fox Valley was using its reserve funds, which I'm not sure that I would recommend. But like writing a grant to the college and saying, I could do this great program if I could get this piece of equipment, or if I could do that. And one of the ways they, the president sold it to us, or described it to us, is we recognize that not all good ideas come during the budget process. And so, we've reserved funds aside for these grant applications for good ideas that happen during the year. And that's what the school districts do with their foundations. And I thought that, it's so simple, but what a great idea. Certainly would promote innovation and creativity among our faculty and our community partners. So, that's, that's one program that did catch my attention.
Thank you. Who's next? Dr. Adami.
You know, when you attend these conferences, you want to make a point to ask these questions, you know, what will we walk away with? How can we implement some of the ideas that are out there? And, you know, it comes down to, you know, the students always first. And so, again, just echoing what my colleague was, was saying, Delmar College is in the forefront of a lot of these clinics and seminars that we've been attending. And again, you know, I'd like to congratulate Mark and the staff and administration to taking it up to the next level. So, we try to, it's always, it's always a great opportunity to meet other trustees, talk to them, listen to ideas, have an opportunity of meeting the new president of CAT. And, and so, you know, these ideas on pathways and diversity, you know, inclusion, they're always important that we need to take away with us all the time and, and see how we can, as a group, you know, get together with other board members and see how we could take this up to the next level. So, Adam, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Garza?
First off, I also want to thank the staff and thank Dr. Eskimia and the board for allowing us to attend these, these conferences and these workshops. They're invaluable. I attended a few workshops, and one that particularly piqued my interest was the strategies for increasing enrollment. Across the country, everyone talks about enrollment numbers being pre-COVID-19 or 2019 school year. And so, everybody's trying to get to reach that level. They talked about dual-credit, and of course, all colleges or just, just about every community college has a dual-credit program that feeds into, or works all the way down into their, into their high school. But then, you also have opportunities, or we have opportunities, to be able to look for ways to take and expand our recruiting efforts into type of receiver, or people need to be not just recruiters, but also receivers. When you're able to get those students from the dual-credit programs into your facilities, into your campuses, trying to get them to be receivers, so that they actually help them through the process, so they feel comfortable being at Delmar, registering at Delmar, figuring out what classes to take and the like. They talked about creating communication plan for dual-credit students to include the parents, the counselors, and the faculty in the high schools. Strategy two is identifying low-hanging fruit. Need to look at the programs or the areas in your community. Sure, we do. And I'm encouraged by what we're doing with our workforce partners and looking for, I'm going to say, quick-term certificates, so that we can meet the needs of the, of industry and the jobs that we have in our community, and preparing our young people for, that's what they see a value in coming to Delmar. But, Madam Chair, you talked about upscaling and, and, shoot, I can't even remember my own writing. Anyway, one of the things that they talked about was besides the certificates and C T programs we, C D programs that we have, coming up with programs for digital certification. A lot of students that are doing remote learning, how do you figure a way to get, get them the credentials that they deserve and that they're going to need in order to enter a workforce and get a job that they're equipped to be able to handle? That's certainly an opportunity that we've got. I think we're probably already working on some of those things. But I know, I think that that's an area where we need to continue to invest in. I know we've talked about building team, recruiting team. I still believe that there's opportunities, because so many of our students that don't, that I'm going to say, would be, should be our niche for Delmar, I don't believe we're reaching out strongly enough. Those are the students that you could work, get into, into certificate-type programs, and then getting them into academic or continuing education programs. And particularly in the high schools, Miller, Moody, West, also, most of those students are not of economic means in order to consider a college as a, as an option after high school. And we need to figure out how we can get those students to think early on about, about attaining higher education. And so, those are some of the things that I heard, or listened to about strategies for increasing enrollment. One of the other things that I thought, kind of tied into the things that we've talked about related to the shifts that are happening at state level, is that we listened, Carol and I attended a luncheon, and we listened to Arthur Levine. He's an author of The Great Upheaval in Higher Education. And he was talking about the fact that education as we know it, when we're used to looking and considering higher education as all the brick and mortar, the four-year experience or the dormitory experience or the athletic experience. But in reality, how are you going to serve those students that want, so to speak, a quick fix? Get that certification, get out there in the workforce, and get into work to start earning, so that they can take care of and improve the position of their families. And there's going to be a huge, huge move in that direction. So, I believe that it's going to be critical that we invest in technology, both investing in the tools it's going to take in order to get us at the forefront of what technology is being used in order to be able to help those and help those students that are going to learn from a remote standpoint. You still need the campuses in order to take care of the masses, those people that are used to being handheld and talked through and shown every example. But you've got a lot of students that feel a lot more comfortable with the handheld devices and the laptops than are, than are able to gain from the, from the social experience that a college offers. And I think that those are going to be the big competitors that we're going to be facing as a community college. You might want to talk a little bit about that, Carol, if you...
Absolutely. I'll piggyback, because that was actually one of the sessions I was going to talk about as well. Dr. Levine's luncheon presentation was really eye-opening. And just going to try to give you just a couple of bullet points that I took notes on, that when you move from a fixed-time, fixed-content model to an outcomes-based model, potentially in funding, but what, what our digital age now has required of higher education, then the dominance for degrees will actually decrease, and just-in-time education will increase. So, the concept that this automation, this potential 24-hour access, how much requires some sort of moderated learning environment versus a self-learning environment. So, there's, there's this big shift happening in education, and that our biggest competitors are not necessarily other higher education institutions, but their online content like Coursera and Google and others. He was giving an example, even museums are now offering masters and doctoral programs in specific areas. So, that it's not traditional education or for-profit, which used to be our big competitors. It's now these other competitors in the field as well. And that outcomes are source, are source-agnostic. Outcomes are source-agnostic. When a student wants to learn something, then they want to go seek out the most efficient and effective way to learn that thing, that skill, that knowledge, whatever it may be. So, it's a really interesting concept to think about. Again, his name is Arthur Levine, and the book is The Great Upheaval. The other thing that I thought was very interesting is some statistics projections. Today, only 18% of students in higher education are full-time, residential, and 18 to 24. Only 18% of students in higher education represent what we all think of as the 18-year-old college freshman who's going away to university and is going to live in a dorm. That's, that really is, doesn't exist anymore. And so, there's, colleges are going to have to really look at this new model and who our new students potentially are going to be. So, I think the other takeaway was, who do we want our customers or our students to be? Talk to the students you want. Recruit the students you want, because tomorrow will not be a repeat of yesterday. So, those are some of the things that really jumped out at me about Mr. Levine's presentation. The other one I wanted to talk about was a presentation from Parkland College on leadership development and succession planning. Now, they have a very robust leadership development program that was developed, has been in place since the early 2000s. So, they've got 20 years of history. But they are doing, they're identifying future leaders from all aspects of the campus, recognizing those who are volunteering for informal leadership positions, that those who are looking at, who have positive, enthusiastic attitudes, those who are showing competencies, or who are collaborative in the work that they're currently doing. And they do think, they do a variety of things. They have a leadership conference for these emerging leaders. That's a three-day off-campus, really kind of out-of-town retreat. They say just far enough away that everybody can drive, but not, but far enough that you don't drive home at night, because you want everybody to be sequestered for a couple of nights, so that you can really get that networking opportunity as well. They look at opportunities from A C C T and A A C C programs, and others like Aspen Institute, Future Leaders Institutes. from ACCT and AACC programs and others like Aspen Institute, Future Leaders Institutes. They look at the National Institute for Staff and Organizational Development, and they also look at the Chair Academy for Training Future Department Chairs, things that I know you all know, but were, some of those acronyms were new to me. And so that really kind of structured environment around identifying and then training future leaders and then giving them opportunities to work within the college has been very fruitful. The return on investment for that particular college, since 2000, they've had 12 deans, six associate VPs, 11 VPs, and four presidents. Not all of those leaders are still at Parkland College. Some of them are at other colleges throughout the state, but they have been really successful in developing their own group of campus leadership through this program. So that was very interesting to me, and I'll type up those notes that make some sense to people who weren't in the session and pass those on to our regents as well. Yes, sir?
Yeah. Again, congratulations to the team and the words you got, and I'm really, really encouraged by all the things that we've been doing, forward-thinking and trying to prepare our young people in order for them to get a job that's going to help their condition. But Dr. Levine left with one particular example. He said that the great one, Wayne Gretzky, the hockey player, said that, they asked him how he scored so many goals, and he said he doesn't skate to where the puck is. He skates to where he thinks the puck is going to be. We anticipate the puck is going to be in order to be able to get there, to be able to achieve what he's achieved. And so again, think about hockey and think about how he, his mentality and where we think we're going to need to be in order to be successful in the future. So, thank you.
So encourage you all to put the next Congress on your agenda. We've already got the dates for next year in Las Vegas, and so we'll make sure that Dalia gets those out. So those of you who can make an opportunity to attend and maybe try to plan events around it, that'd be great if you could attend with us. Any questions? Any follow-up? Again, thank you all for the opportunity to attend. All right, moving into staff reports. We're going to hear our... I'm sorry, Dr. Eskemia, you attended as well, Ms. Bettis, for their comments that you wanted to make. I apologize for we move into the...
No, I really had none, but since you ask. I mean, I think it's really critical that our regents go to these national conferences and statewide conferences and the like. And I think the investment by the college is very important because it's good for us to hear what we're not doing, and it's also good, as Regent Kelly said, to hear what we are doing. And we've heard that over the years, and that's why I'm saying the more the merrier and the like. So I just want to thank you all for going and giving your very precious time. Traveling to New York City is not easy. I think Vegas will probably be a little bit easier, probably a lot easier in a lot of ways, but thank you all for doing that. Those are my comments.
Our practice has always been for regents to be able to attend one of the two national conferences, either the Annual Congress in October or the National Legislative Summit in February in Washington, DC. And so we look for an opportunity for our regents to be able to gain that exposure at that national level whenever you get a chance. All right. Sorry, Ms. Keys and Mr. Culberson, but now we're going to hear our update. Ms. Keys will introduce our guest for today.
Yes, thank you very much, regents. My pleasure today to introduce Mike Culberson, the interim Chief Officer, CEO, CCREDC, Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation today. He has a new title, so thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you. Don't worry, I won't let it get to my head. Madam Chair, regents, thank you, Dr. Eskemia. Dan, thank you for having us here. I want you to know that I come to the Mount once a year for these things, but we talk a lot. We talk a lot. We talk a lot. We take a look at Gulf Coast Growth Ventures, the things that you do with Vistalpena, with Mary, with Dan. Every time we talk to projects, and we talk to a lot of projects, right now we have something like $17 billion worth of projects, and a lot of them are green. So most of them are talking about making hydrogen. You'll hear ammonia. The reason why we do ammonia is not for ammonia's sake, but we can add hydrogen. For those who go over to the College of Science, we'll find out, you can put a hydrogen molecule, hydrogen on to ammonia and ship it quite easily, while hydrogen, moving hydrogen is, can be a little bit of a problem unless you're piping it for less than 25 miles. So we interact with the college a lot. But let me talk to you about some of the things we do. When projects come in and we talk about tax abatements, and I know people go, you know, you need to do this, but tax abatements are a way to better match expenses to revenues. When they're building these multi-billion-dollar, you know, we don't, we think of, wow, billion-dollar here, billion-dollar there. We're $56 billion. If we were a state, we would be eighth, tied with Georgia. I mean, that's how, that's how much we do. This is how much, this is how important Delmar is. This is how important, you know, all of this land is. This is how important a port is. This is how important three Class I rails are. I don't know if you realize, but to get into Mexico, it's much, much easier to train it down, to get it down by rail than it is to go into a port and then try to get into the interior of it. So we are uniquely set for all of these things. And don't get me wrong, I know that we are, you know, we're not going to get corporate headquarters, you know, because one of the first things when they come out with a thing, say, hey, we want an international airport within 45 minutes. Okay? We do have one, but that's not what they mean. So... But anyway, and, you know, I like the airport. I'm on the airport board. I tried very hard not to be on it, but they said the CEO. So let me start going through this. We provide compliance for everybody. We provide for the city of Corpus Christi, both counties. We're nice, we're one of the few that are nice to all cities, counties, and districts in there. We do, we're Type A. If you don't know, in Corpus Christi, in the seignails of Corpus Christi, we have two incentive cell stacks. So it's one-eighth. We have four one-eighth. We have Type A for C-WALL, which is up in 2025. Type A for the American Bank Center, they call it the Arena Fund, which is up in 2025. Type A for economic development, in which a lot of Delmar, the Northwest, all of these have come through and also with project, process technologies and all of those have come through those and go through. And then we also have another one, which is Crime Control District, but then we, the Type A for economic development expired, and the voters replaced it with the Type B, which makes it a lot easier. We use that for economic development and affordable housing and streets. So that's how you get your streets part. So for Type B, we, the EDC, does not only the compliance, but we do the application. So Mary sends me that, and I'll say no, and then I'll send it back, and then she'll send it back, and then she'll eventually stand on my desk, and we'll find a way to get this thing done. But even with you, and you know, and you know, we love you, we do compliance. We do all the compliance that is required. We look through, I never really, so I'm an aerospace engineer. My degree is aerospace engineering. I have an MBA. I have, I'm a CPA in the state of Texas, and I keep that up. So the importance of going through all of the agreements and making sure that they are measuring what you want measured. And so when we go through the agreements, we do IRS 940s, 941s. You're like, well, for those of you in business, you know that every quarter you have to supply the IRS with 941s, which are quarterly reports that, for payroll, and then 940s are your annual. There's a TWC report that actually has where people live, and that's the important part. Now, if we say, if you say you're going to create 150 jobs and you have people, and this happens all the time, and when I was in with ABB, it happened a lot, we would have people in other cities and countries that are on your payroll, and that's fine, but they don't count toward that 150. Everybody on that 150 has to live here, and I make sure of that. And I'm going to retire next year, and I'm changing my number, so, you know, don't bother, don't bother calling. But, but we'll have somebody else who does that, somebody who's smart like that and knows this. Now, you know, you don't have to be really smart to look at TWC reports, but, I mean, don't worry, they'll get all that. We'll review all the assertions, and then for Delmar College ones, the ones that the regents have passed, we send, I send an annual report to the president for his review. And of course, I work with your attorney all the time. Really, once we're happy, then we send the report to your president. So right now, we have, you have two that are still active. You have M&amp;G, which of course is now CC Polymers, and I'll show you real quick. So they were bought out of bankruptcy from Alpac, which is like the, one of the largest ethane cracker PET. So we have PET and PTA. So PET is, I don't know, what's the name?
Eflene Terafale.
Turn on your mic and say something. And they also have a PTA plant, okay? So Alpac is one of the largest in the world. In fact, it had to go through the Federal Trade Commission to approve this buy. Endorama, which is out of Thailand, although they're an Indian company, as in India, and Far Eastern out of Taiwan. So they bought it, and they are going to mobilize. So they said they're going to do 751. Castleton was a great idea. It's just they were bought and they decided to go somewhere else. And Vistalpena docks. Now, Vistalpena docks, that was something that Lloyd Neal at the county thought of, and what he wanted, there was, there's been a lawsuit going on between the two counties, is, you know, if I put a dock and it extends into the line, you know, is that San Patricio or is that once across the mean-high-tide mark, is it now Nuasis County? I had a lawyer once ask me, well, Mike, if you built a, if you built a house on the dividing line, would you move the county property loan? And I said, no. He goes, well, so it shouldn't happen. Anyway, it did happen. And so, and so one of the reasons why you did the Vistalpena docks was you didn't want them paying income to poverty tax if you had to refund it. Right now, the reason why there's a line to it is it is considered over in San Patricio, and it's not counted on the appraisal district. In fact, if you go on the appraisal district and you type Vistalpena, it'll just show nothing. You have Epic Wide Grade. It says 200 million and 10 jobs, but if you've been over there, you'll realize that, and unbeknownst to us, I'll be honest, they built a huge, I mean, a huge crude facility over there. And when the neighbors were up in arms, we were up there. We were up there with them, you know, because we don't want it either. We live here also. And they did some things. There were some things they were worried about, said, hey, if you have a fire, we can't get out of here. So they paid for another road to get out of there and to go. So even though it's only 200 million, they actually have the crude facility, which is another 150 million, that probably would not have been here had you not approved that for the fractionating plant. So right now, just like I said, we have two of them. M&amp;G, let's call it, let's say CC Polymers and make them feel good. They've mobilized. They're 750. Right now, on the rolls, they're 669, but they're thinking they're going to be 200 to 300 million more to get that done. So you will see even more come back to you. You got paid for the abatement amendment that you had just done. So that was money that's, I wouldn't say not expected, but now you have it in pocket. And then they still have to create the 200 jobs going forward. So they are still looking for a production start of 2024, and Epic Wide Grade is blowing and going. They're doing fine. They've did everything that they said they were going to do. And I want to talk to you real quick about why do we do incentives? We do incentives to incentivize people to make a decision to come here. And people go, well, why don't we get all of the money that if they came here? Well, they wouldn't come here. I promise you, they won't come here because there's state of Louisiana that's more than willing to pay a lot of money to get those. And there are a lot of other companies for, we'll say, we won't say the word, but the one that has the big X's on the service station, the governor of Mississippi said he was going to be the project manager on that, the governor. So you want to talk about, you know, we're fighting for those things. And so the question isn't whether you're going to get 18 million or 24 million, it's whether you're going to get 18 million or 78,000. That's what these are. And once they're here, they're here for 50 years. Even when Sherwin went out of business, they had been here 50 years. This is what you are counting on. These are, and we talk to people all the time. I talk to, you know, when we were doing the Tesla deal for down there, and that's going to be, I'll talk about in a second. You know, at Rockstown ISD, these create jobs that your kids can, that you can get trained on. Your kids can get it. They can buy a car. They can buy a house. They can get married. They can raise kids. They can have, they can have a family, and they could have a good life. I mean, think about it. We talk all about, and, you know, I'm not a graduate of Delmar, but I've been, but I have 12 hours, so I'm pretty happy. So, you know, we talk about that, everybody needs a four-year degree. Well, in Corpus Christi, only 25, less than 25% have a bachelor's or above. So are we all going to write off the 75%? No, you aren't, thank God. You are not going to do that. You are going to give them jobs. You're going to give them training, whether it's just, you know, hey, swinging a hammer on how to be a carpenter, how to do framing. You are going to save these kids, and a lot of these jobs are the exact kind of jobs where they can have, they can raise a family, and they can do well. And that's what we need, and that's what we need in this area. We don't need kids leaving. I left here in 1975, going across the Harbor Bridge, and I don't know if you remember, but the inmates used to stand on the fourth floor of the thing and wave outside the bars. Yeah. It said 254,000, pulled into Austin, said 218,000. We came back, my wife wanted to come back in 2005. We came in 277,000. I don't remember how much Austin is, but it seems bigger. Seems bigger. I'm just saying. And it's kids that we're losing. It's not people like me, you know, it's, well, I'm a boomerang, actually. But it's kids that we're losing, and it just becomes a very, very big deal. And these are the types of things that you can do that can affect it. And not only that, we know that you will sit there with us at the table and you say, well, you know what? We'll make a, we'll make a process technology curriculum so that you will have people. And those are very, very important to us. So let me talk really quickly about, yep, I lost it. Thank you. Okay, so let me talk really quickly about Tesla. They have a 313 application pending before the comptroller's office. I'm sure there's a guy named Greg who's sitting up in Austin who's kind of probably took it and put it at the top of the pile. I don't, I wouldn't doubt that. Now, they know that Delmar grows by school district, and they know that you are on the ballot in November, and they know that if that ballot passes that they will be in your, and they have not asked for anything, nor have we offered. So those are all known. So that's about 400 million, 150 jobs. So I want you to know that you're very important to us, to the community, and to how we attract companies. You're very important about when you decide to forego some short-term tax benefits for long-term tax growth and jobs. And I want you to know that when you put one in order, that there is somebody who goes in every year and checks and makes sure that they are in compliance and doesn't just kind of move over and just say, hey, thanks for being here, you know, we don't care. All right? Thank you very much. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Culberson. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I want to let you know that we now have guided pathways, and we can get you a counselor to turn those 12 hours into a certificate or a degree.
All right. Give me something to do in my third career.
Well, I was showing him that outdoor kitchen right out the window there, so he may have to come back for a culinary arts degree.
Yeah, my wife would like me to come.
I'd just like to make the comment in response. Mike, first of all, thanks for being here as always. You've been, even though you're retiring, what'd you say, 10 more years?
Yeah, August, next August. I'm not even going to be here next year.
So, but I want to thank you for all the work that you've done. You've been a great friend and colleague here for a lot of years, the 14 that I've been here and before that, I know. But I want to thank you. But your point about the diversification of the companies coming in, see, there's a debate out there, and I obviously have to be really, I am just inherently neutral about these kinds of things from my position. about these kinds of things in, from my position. But bringing in abatements is so important now more than ever. So many folks, so many people in groups out there are against the abatements just unilaterally. And I'm saying, now's the time to use them to diversify. Now's the time to bring in the blues and the green energies and all those other kinds of things to diversify what's already out there. Because those are probably some of the lower hanging fruit. I mean, we have examples of some of those coming. And I know they're in the minority at this point. But if we can keep growing those opportunities and balancing out the petrochems and everything else and diversifying, do everything we've been saying we've been, we needed to do for the past, well, since 1975, in 2005, when you got back. I think now is the time to really keep that at the forefront of our discussion and to see how we can be a part of it. I know recently, there was a school district across the bridge that voted no against the 313 and made a statement that way. And, okay, well, you know, we live with it and we keep moving on. It's no longer a one-sided argument. Right now, I think is time to, for us to either get your successor and/or you while you're here to come back and really talk about what that diversification could look like. And you can use all your code names and everything else that you have to protect the projects. But bring us up to speed with that. I would ask that if you and someone, or someone from the EDC, CCR EDC can bring us up to speed on how that diversification could look. I think it would bring more positive attention to these abatements. And I don't know, I always like to stay at the forefront of those conversations. I don't want to be behind. So, those are my comments.
And I'll tell you what all of the plant managers and HR people tell you, starting now, if it hadn't even already started 10 years ago, you have to be a lifelong learner. Your job may not, may not be what it's going to, you know. We talked to the refineries and you have mill rights. They've done mill right for 35 years. You know, that may not, it might not exist. What you start today may not exist 20 years from now. So, you have to be a lifelong learner. And you help with that. Delmar helps with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Culberson. The question I have for Ms. Keys and maybe Mr. Garcia, these abatement agreements phase in. They're zero during construction or for a maximum period of time. And then, they phase in at 10%, 20%, up to 100% tax value. So, where are we with both of those CC Polymers and Epic Wide Grade ending in 2024? Are we, where are we in those, that step ladder?
Okay, so in, with CC Polymers, with the abatement amendment, do you want to take that, Mr. Rivera? Because you had changed from a percentage to actual, this is a minimum that you have to hit. And then, for Epic, you are through the 100%. In other words, not getting any. And so, now you're into 50%. And Epic does not go all the way out to 10 years. It can go out to 10 years, but it does not because of where it's set in a thing. I think it's 100% for two years or construction. So, if they were to finish early, then it would stop. And then, 50% for five years? Epic. Do you remember Epic? I don't remember it off the top of my head.
If you can make a note next year when we do this to think about where we are with those two agreements. Because I think it'd be important to understand where we are in that, because I know they were tiered. And just understanding where we are in that tiered process would be helpful for next year.
Okay, I'll get that, too.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Culberson, for being here. We appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? All right, we will move into our enrollment update. Dr. Escamilla, do you want to start that conversation while Ms. Benavides Dominguez and Ms. Keys come up?
I'm going to wait to the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, I mean, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Regents. Today, we are going to review the student enrollment report data for 2020, 2021. An overview of enrollment is what we're going to share with you today. Begins with the explanation of the state Texas Biennium, base year for contact hours, formula funding, head count, contact hours, dual credit, then ending with an annual update, contact hours for the fall and spring semesters, continuing education, corporate services, and some retention metrics. And I'm going to hand it over to my colleague, Lenore.
Thank you very much. As we all know, the legislature pays us on an annual, or semi-annual, two years, every two years Biennium, a base year. And the base year starts with an even number year, starting in what would be defined as the summer one semester. What's significant here is that summer one is defined as anything that comes after the first 16-week term in spring, which is January. So, anyone that enrolled in February, March, or any of those other subsequent semesters, which we have 16-week, 15-week, 14-week, 8-week, May semesters, anyone that enrolls in those other semesters is considered summer one. And so, those counted for the '22, '23 Biennium, which is coming up, which is the legislature would determine now, which is what we get paid for in the next time. This is the base year calendar. And if you notice, we have two different sets here. One is for credit and the other is for continuing education. Credit is a course on the semester and summer terms. And this shows how it began for, in the base year of '22 to '23 would begin paying out in February of next year, or begins in August of next year and started in February for '22, as it moves forward. We right now are in quarter one for the continuing education. This is showing our revenues and how the pie chart works out for this budget year right now. We want to focus on the state appropriations. And this is what we're going to refer to in this enrollment report. State appropriations based on contact hours presently is approximately 15% of our total $114,706 budget, operating budget. However, we do receive an additional 5% of our budget to go towards benefits, state benefits. This is showing our base year funding as it presently exists for the base year Biennium of '22, '23. Of course, those dollars were earned during 2021. It's what we're being funded on presently. And this is how we come up with the over $17 million, which is comprised, of course, of our contact hour funding, our credit hour funding, which we receive from continuing education and credit, and then our student success formula, and then your base or your core operations amount that every college or university gets, college gets. I was going to, next time my last doctor asks me, we wanted to talk about this here, is that this may be changing as we move forward in this legislative session. As we just had the comments and the overview on the work of the commission on state funding, this could change. If this were to go from the contact hour portion that you see here in blue and become outcome-based, we don't know exactly what that would mean. And we don't know what the legislature will do. However, we do know that there's a lot of work going towards that right now as we roll into the new legislative session. So, this is potentially going to change.
We've actually had the discussion that we're going to have to continue to do our counts this way and be prepared in case there's a bottleneck and the legislation doesn't pass, then we'll be, we'll still be doing this for another two years. It is our hope that there will be a new funding model. And in the midst of that, we will be part of what was passed at the commission level was a recommendation that there be a temporary hold harmless so that no college would fall behind as we transition to this new, or would lose funding, I should say, not fall behind, but would lose funding. So, we would have to still calculate what would our funding be based on the old model? And if we would be potentially one of the colleges that might lose funding because of the new formula, we would have some sort of temporary hold harmless for a year, two, three, whatever the number would be. But there's, so we'll have to continue with these calculations for the short term while we're thinking about how the new calculations might work.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And that's exactly where we are and with the new commission work that's coming out. And so, but this gives you an example of how the funding has come over the last many, many years on the Biennium basis.
Patricia? This slide shows how formula funding has changed over time and what the rate will be for '22, '23. The success point rate will be 200 and, oh, dang. I have the wrong thing. Oh, I'm ahead of myself. I'm sorry. We always like to compare ourselves where we are in relation to our large college peer group. This slide shows the funding in each category, as you see there. Yes?
Go back to that one real quick. Just look at the proportions on this last, second to last column right here to see how far ahead we are.
Contact hour funding.
Contact hour for continuing education. To just show you the volume of work that we've been doing there and putting that in there. That drew the attention of a lot of people in Austin. And it was no accident that I think I was put on as lead of the workforce group and the like. Those numbers just go back and reflect a lot of hard work, a lot of hard work by our staff. But that'll pay off. That'll balance things out as we move ahead. Thanks, Patricia.
This slide shows how formula funding has changed over time and what the rate will be for '22, '23. The student success point rate will be $264.78. The slide shows the base year funding for each Biennium, beginning with 2018, 2019 to current year. The funding shows we are down in credit contact hours by 3% and up 35.9% in CE contact hours. When you combine the two, we're slightly up.
Yeah, thank you, Patricia. I wanted to reiterate what Dr. Escamilla just said. The significance here is if you take the swing between Delmar College at up 35, almost 36% in continuing education contact hours compared to the community colleges statewide, which were down almost 38%. That's a huge, huge swing. And another reason that we were seen and got a lot of attention.
So, what does that actually mean in terms of the question? That's a rhetorical question. I mean, it means that the college is reacting to the community and responding to the community. And so, where people call, people say that there's a downward trend in enrollment, I don't see it that way if we're keeping all, making all students equal. It's a shift. They're moving from traditional age to less traditional ages, but they're still students. They haven't changed. They're still people, right? But people don't, colleges don't see it that way. The state is starting to see it that way. When the commissioner of higher ed is saying, is changing his vocabulary and frankly, building his vocabulary because he's been a university-centric person and focused person for a long time. And all good, this was our opportunity. And so, now, the language at the coordinating board and the infrastructure, the data and information that's being stored, the coordinating board is now changing and actually being built from the ground up to support these data sets. It's really, really interesting.
Well, I think, I'd like to tie this back to what Mr. Culberson was just talking about and the relationship that's happened here within, with what the college has been able to do with forward thinking in these areas to meet that demand that's out there in the workforce.
Student success funding. This graph is a review of how colleges review student success points. Texas Community College receives points after a student reaches certain milestones, such as completing developmental work, completing 15, 30 hours of credit and earning a credential. This is our annual weighted success points total. We always like to compare ourselves to our peer group. This chart compares Delmar College to other large colleges across the state. It shows where we're at with regard to success points. Delmar College in 2019, 2020, success point total was 16,753, which is flat in comparison to our 2018, 2019, and down 5% from 2017, 2018. We fall in the middle in this peer group. Spring credit head count. This slide is our state-reported data for spring credit head count and includes flex data entry. The slide shows the enrollment struggles we are experiencing due to pandemic and the inflation, which we are still addressing today. We continue to focus on increasing second eight weeks, which has added to our flex data point in our CBM count. The college experienced a dip in enrollment in spring '22, which is down 15%. Fall credit head count. This bar graph provides a fall historical head count, beginning with fall 2018 to current, and shows a steady decline. As you can see, we are down 6.4% for fall '22. Summer. This slide is a review of our head count for summer one. We certified 4989, which we were up 10%. The data from, in comparison to summer '21. You can see that the flex enrollment assisted in our certified data, which goes to point. We've been doing a lot of emphasis on the flex semesters. Summer two. In review of our head count of summer two, we certified 3355, which we were down 10% for summer in comparison to summer '21. Credit contact hours. This bar graph provides a historical perspective of our credit contact hour overview from 2017 to 2018 to current year. The chart illustrates a steady increase in contact hours for the first three academic years. And in the last two years, we have a slight decline as a result of the ongoing pandemic. Dual credit. The dual credit program continues to grow, although from fall '20 to fall '21, enrollment took a slight dip. Overall, this slide shows that we've been at a 5% increase with 16.5%. We currently have 35 high schools participating in the dual credit program. We're in nine counties in our service area. And we currently, and we continually strive to strengthen our ISD partnerships. Continuing education.
As you see here, the continuing trend for continuing education, this is an annual head count. Many of our students are taking multiple courses. However, this is a solid head count for '21, '22. And when you look at your annualized enrollment, you have over 13,000 students who've come to us in continuing education. I'd like to state that during the pandemic, where we, for 2021 and 2122, is very solid numbers over the year 1920. Our transportation services are a CDL program. And our health programs really continued And our health programs really continued and really outshone the rest of the state as far as total enrollments. And this is your total contact hours for credit and continuing education, which I think you can see the combined impact as to how the two combine together to give us a standard trend. And these also combine to provide contact hour reimbursement or funding from the state of Texas. We continue to promote registration and leverage the HERF programs, funds to assist with enrollment and continue to work with our partners to stimulate enrollment. And many of the activities that have gone on through the student advising and student affairs office have leveled us out during the pandemic years. Patricia.
This slide shows the fall '21 to fall '22 enrollment percentages of our cohort colleges across the state. Delmar has experienced a 6.44 decline from fall '21 to fall '22. The cohort ranges from 6.44 to positive 5.66. Dual credit. This slide is a relatively new data point that we are monitoring. Dual credit students are monitored annually to see how many are earning a credential by high school graduation, how many earn, how many enroll at Delmar College upon completing high school, and how many earn a degree within one year of completing high school. As you can see here from the cohort of 2021, we had 1,220 seniors, which was 9.3% earning a credential, 28.4% enrolled at Delmar College, and 13.1% earned a credential within one year of completing high school. We attribute this to the, this metric with our enrollment staff, our faculty, our ISD partners, encouraging students to finish the program that they started in high school. Intrusive advising and outreach practices with students starts early on in the freshman year. And it truly is, it's a, I don't know how to say it, but a controlled chaos situation where we are handing out, we have the dual credit advisors, enrollment advisors, faculty that are teaching at the high school, all working with these students. And we do track these students and we do pass this information to our ISD partners so that they know how many of their students are earning a credential while they're there because they're interested in the CCMR points, and also how many of them are earning it upon high school graduation. This chart demonstrates the fall-to-fall retention, beginning with fall '17 to current year. And this chart is the same information as the previous slide, but comparing it to Texas community colleges. And as you can see, the metrics are pretty the same. Do we have any questions?
Questions? Dr. Escamilla, you had comments?
Two slides back, maybe three. One more. Yes, so we've been talking about this, talking about the number of students matriculating to Delmar after dual credit. That's what that, this column is, right? That number, I think, is a very strong number compared to statewide data. Do you have any indication, any comparison?
The state is not, the state, this is not, that I'm aware of, that we, that this is tracked by COboard. This is something that we're tracking.
We've brought it up, I brought it up in state meetings and so forth. And I know, Regent Kelly, you asked about that some time ago. But anywhere in the, in that range right there, the percentage-wise is a strong indicator of dual credit being a strong and powerful tool to bring them, bring them to the college. Of course, lots of drivers, lots of reasons why, price of university and that kind of thing.
And we should see those numbers going up as we can accommodate students who now can't afford the tuition for dual credit.
That was exactly my, my next point. You read my mind. And that, that number, we need to watch this number very closely because the state is going to get behind our students with the commission redoing the financing and making that a metric and, or, excuse me, making that a priority, funding students with need and preparing them. I think there's going to be some more, well, stay tuned with this number is what I'm saying. I'm trying to make, connect those dots with the new, new way of funding and this metric, Patricia. So just need to keep an eye out. Stay tuned.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Along the same lines, dual credit, just a question. Since there's different information coming out about what the state's going to be coming along to help with funding for dual credit, do we have someone that actually visits the campuses or if we see a drop-off in dual credit graduate students from a particular ISD or particular school? Do we have someone that actually, I'm just kind of wondering it within myself. Are we people-dependent? I mean, are we dependent on a teacher, on a counselor or a principal or some administrator being a fan of dual credit? Or do we have a process that says we go in, we kind of give them all the tools, all the benefits, and then hope that?
It's all those things. It's our relationship with each high school. And, you know, some relationships, you know, I wouldn't say are stronger than others, but there are some schools that I would say do it better than other schools, right? And sometimes, you know, every year we have to re-educate the staff because there's staff turnover. There may be a new principal, a new high school counselor to educate on, you know, what do we have available with dual credit? And so, yes, we, those metrics, we do share with them. Every month, our, sometimes more than once a month, our dual credit advisors are out there at the schools pounding the pavement, talking with supers, talking with the principal, talking with counselors, parents, students. We have parent nights. As a matter of fact, on April 17th, we're inviting counselors here to this campus to do a tour. And we're doing some strategic invites to counselors and ISD board members to come and look at our facilities. We have changed so much, all our infrastructures on every campus so that we can tell them, this is what we have, this is what it looks like. So we, so we do have strategic events throughout the year, inviting people to come from those, from those ISDs. And we do share the metrics with them because I love competition. I love for them to see what everyone else is doing.
Patricia, how many people do we have over there with Bob?
We have four.
Yep. And then they're not the only four, but they are going from place to place in college, dual credit night to dual credit night to dual credit night. And I would invite everybody to, if you, if you do social media, to go, there are different departments within Delmar College, so there are multiple groups within, and dual credit is one, continuing ed is another, and there's different little things. You'll see the events that way. Otherwise, you won't really know that those things are going on.
And many of the dual credit students are CE students. So, you know, we are constantly working to make sure, okay, this student's a senior. How are we taking care of them? I know this week, on Monday, we had our dual credit advisors out at the high school registering students for spring registration, so.
I just think sometimes if you have a dual credit champion at the high schools or at the ISDs, right?
Oh, yeah.
That's critical to the success of your program. And then if that champion retires or transfers or something, then you've got to have a way of recognizing that you've got to go back in and develop somebody new, a new champion.
Well, the built-in metric for the, for the ISD is that CCMR. So, you know, it's a win-win. You know, they want the CCMR point. We want them to earn a credential, and so that's what unites us, I think.
Yep. And if you, if you see, if you get a chance, Regent Garcia, to see, one of the most recent ones was London ISD that I saw. The cafeteria was almost standing room only with the parents there. You'll see what the power of the team actually does, high school by high school by high school on every dual credit night. And invariably, whenever you have one, I get a phone call from somebody saying, hey, I need you to help me with so and so. We're so closely tied to the community. It is a, it is a, it's a community-based effort. And I would, I don't know how I can get you to, I'll shoot you some slides and so forth. If you, what I, I know you want to visualize, you haven't seen, it doesn't sound like. But I want you to see what those cafeterias look like when they're full of parents and right next to their students.
And recently, I think it was like last week, Davis and Dean Schrammick were at the New Carroll High School, working with our ISD Carroll partners on curriculum and bringing students in.
Thank you very much for that presentation. We appreciate the detail. Next up, we have our HERF update. Mr. Garcia is going to talk to us about the Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds. Oh, wait, Lenora's going to start.
I'm going to kick us off. Yes, thank you. The college received over $30.8 million due to COVID pandemic and the resulting higher education emergency relief funding. This update will show you how the funds from HERF II and III were allocated and distributed to support student and operational initiatives. Over 52% of the funds went towards student support. The remaining 48% was distributed to address operations, technology, and health-related needs of the college due to the COVID pandemic. The following provides specific information on these various strategies. And now, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Lenora. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, and members of the board. Just a little bit more of a backdrop to today's presentation. So the college delivered the first higher education relief funding for II and III back in April of 2021. And so we have since then delivered multiple updates describing the rigid financial compliance requirements of the grant, our spending plan, and have introduced our HERF committee. And so we're going to go ahead and start off with the first slide. So this first slide represents our initial spending plan on the combined HERF grants valued at $30.8 million. One takeaway from this slide is that, as my colleague mentioned, that over 50% of the grant has been set aside for student financial aid assistance, retention, and re-engagement initiatives. This includes here on this slide, the emergency and student success initiatives valued at $11.5 million and the $4.6 million respectively. This is on top of the already $18 million that we provide to our students in federal financial aid on an annual basis. The remaining allocation of funds went towards defraying expenses associated with the pandemic, including lost revenues, technology costs associated with a transition to distant education, creating a health and safety environment for our students and our employees, and training for faculty and staff. Fast forward today, we are near the end of the grant and on track with spending the full amount of the grant by June 30th. Today's financial figures are fluid because of the pending commitments and encumbrances. Our final financial reporting of grant spend will be completed by May or June of 2023. If there are no questions on this slide, my colleague Patricia Benavides Dominguez, Vice President of Student Affairs, will provide further details of our spending plan for direct emergency awards to our students valued at $11.5 million.
I already spent almost all of it. So this slide is an overview of how we have allocated HERF funding directly to the student. The requirement from Department of Ed stated that we had to award directly to the student. And this shows how awards were dispersed. So you can see how, you know, the awards by term for funds awarded, average award, and students assisted.
Thank you, Patricia. So Ms. Benavides, Benavides Dominguez, just completed her presentation on one of three tranches to our HERF grant funding. We're now going to turn our attention to the next two tranches valued at $19.3 million. Members of the advisory committee will also provide spending updates for the other activities that I mentioned earlier. So here we go. Lost revenues. The grant provided funding for lost revenues caused by the pandemic with a reported value. We have billed the grant close to $3.9 million. This includes, or is related to, the tuition and fees, revenues, as well as food services and childcare. I will now ask Ms. Tammy McDonald to provide an update to our vaccination program.
Thank you. In the fall of 2021, the college implemented a COVID-19 voluntary vaccination incentive program for employees and students. We had approximately 706 employees that participated, and they received a one-time incentive payment of a net of $200. And we had one student short of 4,000, so if 3,999 students participate, and they received a one-time incentive of a $200 gift card. So our total spend for this program was a little bit over $1 million, and we felt that it was very successful. Thank you.
The success outreach campaign. Student Services was allotted $4.6 million to spend on students. We've spent $2.2 million and have $2.4 million to go. As you can see by the pie chart, we are strategic on where we spend the money. For example, we have utilized HERF funds to eliminate student debt, student debt since spring '20. We've been utilizing that, so far we have cleared $675,825,000, which is about approximately 31% of the HERF funds. There are additional talking points there that we have expended the dollars, but I just took out student debt as one talking point. This past fall, we did the campaign that I'll go over in the next slide on fall, second eight weeks at a class. That was one of the campaigns that we, we did. So on the HERF campaign timeline, this slide represents the HERF dollar spent in support of marketing student-focused financial aid campaigns. The Funds For You ran summer 2021 during July and August to promote fall '21 enrollment. The At-A-Class ran at the end of 2021 and through the first of 2022 in support of spring '22 enrollment. And the Tag Your In ran summer '22 to promote second summer session and fall 2022 enrollment. The 800 on Us is the one that we just recently had that was promoting the second eight-week fall '22 enrollment. These campaigns have been on TV, radio, digital, social media, streaming services, print, and billboards. Collectively, these campaigns have had over 4 million impressions to our residents in Corpus Christi and the surrounding areas. And they also delivered over 20,000 unique visits to our website.
I have a question about these campaigns. So of the 989,000 spent, that's, that's spent on the campaigns or the, because those numbers don't add up with what you?
Right.
Talk about, so tell me, I'm trying to understand the numbers.
That's on the marketing.
Gotcha.
That's what we spent on, on all those, all those billboards, radio spots, social media. We established FAQs on the website, print ads, postcards, and establishing the online HERF application.
And so how many students then are we talking about, the combined, those four combined campaigns reached?
Well, I don't have that figure, but on the, the student debt amount for that figure, we helped 1,666 students. That is duplicated. I don't have the amounts for all the campaigns, but I could get that to you.
So as opposed to impressions, I think the real result is how many students actually applied and utilized those funds? And what are we learning about those students? What, what triggers them to act? Is it the same students taking advantage of several programs in a row? Are these all unique students? I'm just curious as to what we're learning about these campaigns and how we can use that to better our, our marketing and our enrollment in the future.
On slide four, you can see the number of students assisted by term. So you'll be able to see that and the average award and the funds expended in each term. So that, that gives you?
But we don't know if those are directly related to those campaigns? Are they all directly related to those campaigns or?
Most of them are, yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's the correlation, is that? And, all right.
With the exception of the, when we first started in the spring of '20, we had to expend that money right off the way. We did batch awarding based on need. That was the HERF II.
So in?
The cares.
In spring of '20?
Yeah, I don't have that on there. I'm sorry.
So we don't have a spring '22 camp, I guess that's at a class. So the spring '22 would be at a class?
Right.
And that resulted in 5,600? And that resulted in fifty-six-hundred students that were, that doesn't make sense because your direct student numbers is who you gave money to out of the direct emergency system. I'm trying to figure out how many people actually enrolled as a result of these campaigns.
The, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I don't think we can do a direct correlation. I think there were multiple touchpoints on their marketing campaign, but this is the result of of the students that we assisted using HERF money.
Right, but that's separate from these campaigns. So, somebody could get money from the assistance program and get this tuition assistance grant?
They're related.
They're related, yes. But it could very well be that the campaign, those folks that were interested may not have qualified but still got enrolled to the college. That's the number that I'm not too sure we're able to get our arms around. So, overall, yes, we made a campaign. These are the numbers of students that we assisted, but there's also that other factor that we just can't get our arms around is those students who did not qualify, but the campaign was sufficient enough to inquire about our different academic programs and decided to continue to move forward enrolling with our institution.
Well, I'm thinking we're also missing those students who may have been attracted to the college but didn't apply for financial aid.
I guess what, I guess I'm really trying to understand, on slide sixty, the success outreach plan, you had six-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand dollars spent on the at-a-class campaign in spring of twenty-two. How many students received that six-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand dollars?
Yeah, we would have to pull the data and
Okay.
and define that a little bit further for you.
Yeah.
I'll submit it.
Yeah.
And it's not that, it's not that I'm interested as a data point. I want to know what we're learning and it can that, is is there some application to our marketing? I mean, almost a million dollars is a lot of money spent on a campaign.
Yes.
And I want to understand what we're learning from that process. So, that's, I guess that's where I'm, yeah.
More work needs to be on that.
I'll give you those metrics.
Okay.
Because I appreciate impressions. I mean, again, I'm generally in that business and I, but but that's, that is a, that's a, that's not a true outcome. Outcome is how many students and
Yes.
are we helping?
Okay, sure. Mr. Kelly, I'm not too sure if we answered your question. What was your question again?
Well, I I get we're trying to attract students. Some qualified for the program, some didn't qualify for the program, some may have been attracted to the college and didn't use the program. So, we, I guess one of the, one of the things is, do we ask students, why are you here? Is it because of an ad campaign or some other reason? I mean, to get the numbers that Carol's talking about, I think we have to ask.
Because I look at our declining enrollment, which which we know there's a lot of factors related to declining enrollment and what happened over the last two years. And then I look at our direct, the HERF funds that went directly to students. They can use them however they need to for food, lodging, transportation, whatever they need to use, pay their bills, whatever. So, we don't have anything to do with that. That's a direct contribution to to a student. And then we have these monies that we're targeting to students to try to get them to take more classes, come and take a class on us, whatever it's going to be. And how successful are those in an environment of still declining enrollment?
Yes.
So, I'm trying to understand those those pieces of information and what's working and what's not. And if we find something that's working, do we need more resources to keep, keep working it?
Yeah. So, we could probably provide you the data points based on this information that's here, number of students, how much was awarded. And then, we would probably need to do some additional work to drill down in the survey survey type to understand what encouraged these students or what attracted the students to come to our institution. But it'll be beyond, I guess, the marketing strategy, I would think, right? These different campaigns.
And Carol, I guess there's a question for you. Are we thinking that we want to see who is attracted by TV, who is attracted by radio to understand which parts of the program are the most effective?
That's less of importance to me is who are the students are responding to this? And do we have students who are who are maybe not scholarship eligible or maybe don't have the FAFSA that they've completed, but something like this would be, again, I don't know all the parameters, but but
Yes.
why is this attractive to some students and not to others?
Yes.
And what can we learn about that? And are there there funds that we should be thinking about on a regular basis, strategic funds? We should be thinking about on a regular basis that encourage students to take an extra class on us, to come and give us a try? What do we want to call it?
The at-a-class and the eight hundred on us was not predicated on financial aid, you know, enrollment or that they had to qualify. Now, the tag is predicated on them doing a FAFSA and being eligible, and that we had to leverage fifty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars of the HERF funds because we're trying to establish a baseline with continuing this on beyond when the HERF dollars are no longer here.
Yeah.
And I can get you that metric for tag. That is definitely FAFSA predicated.
But the other two were not.
The other two were not.
Yeah.
And those are much bigger numbers, yeah.
Right.
Sure, if I understand that the data points that we're really interested is really, is the one part that those individuals who did not receive financial aid, that's important to us to learn to say, hey, if there's additional need that's out there that's not being fulfilled through a federal grant or a straight funding grant, further discussions around what can we do a little bit different? What have we learned from this data? The other piece that I'm still trying to wrap my head around is, you know, how effective, are we looking to see how effective is our marketing strategy? That any, I think is what I'm, I think I'm hearing from you, Mr. Kelly, is how effective our marketing strategy is and, you know, do we use something different? What what venues do we have out there to to market our different programs and which is the most effective? What can we get a bigger bang for our dollar? Is what I think I'm hearing.
Well, you are. When the HERF funds are gone, if we're going to spend a million dollars on advertising, it means we're not spending a million dollars on something else. Right? And so, would be very interested in whether it's effective, whether it's driving up enrollment, increasing awareness to people who would benefit from our programs.
Yes. Mr. Kelly, I want to make sure I understand this. You mentioned if we're not spending a million dollars, we're spending it on something else.
If we're not using HERF funds and we spend a million dollars, it's coming out of our budget, which means we're not using that million dollars somewhere else in our budget.
Sure, sure, if I enter, we may be talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, because these HERF dollars are gone, right? I won't be able to spend a million dollars unless I redirect resources.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Full resources from other areas to fund marketing strategies, I think is what I'm hearing.
That's exactly what you're hearing.
Okay.
We had a grant, and we were able to spend a million dollars on these programs without taking it out of other programs, but that's not going to be true in the future.
Sure, is it possible that the recommendation is to set aside dollars for marketing on top of possibly additional financial aid gaps to fund financial aid-needed gaps? Is that the recommendation that I'm hearing?
Well, I'm not making a recommendation. We don't know how effective the campaign has been. We don't know whether that money would be well spent.
We need to parse out that that data further. Patricia has the data sets, and we need to take it a little deeper and 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 establish what what students were attached to what dollars. In other words, what
For example, the Eight Hundred on Us campaign, which specifically targeted fall second-eight weeks enrollment, we assisted three-hundred-and-eighty-six students with that three-hundred-thousand dollars. Okay, so, but I'll give you all the metrics for each one of those categories.
Is it fair to say the question is, did, did this ad drive these students to the college? Did that campaign drive the students to the college?
But isn't hard to tell. The offer, because because it's, it's a substantive offer that is marketed, and and I'm not, I'm not trust your marketing. I'm not doubting your marketing. I'm just wanting to know if the substantive offer was a catalyst to make students, we've made an assumption about our students for a long time that they're part-time because of, because of their life choices, they have to work, they have their parenting, they're doing a number of things. And one of our ongoing discussions has always been about semester credit hour and time to completion. As we potentially move to outcomes-based funding, then just counting a student in credit hours isn't going to be enough anymore. That conversation around completion has got to completely change all of our thinking. And so, if adding a class on us, if encouraging students to take that second class, that second-eight-week class on us is a true motivation, if that is a substantive offer to motivate a student to take more classes while they're here, to move from part-time to full-time or move from part-time to more partly time, whatever you want to say it, then then is that a substantive offer that we need to be thinking strategically about? I'm not, I'm not talking about marketing. I'm talking about the substantive offer, and do we need to be thinking strategically about what moves our students to take more classes and to complete at a, at a faster pace?
Yep. The answer is yes. The short answer is yes, because, and after tomorrow's visit, this Friday, my staff meeting that'll, what I call my expanded staff meeting, will be probably a group of about thirty or so of us from the, from the college to begin talking about how we're going to reposition our resources to address this potential new way of of doing things. So, that that conversation starts, it actually started today, but we really have our first operational meeting this Friday morning from eight o'clock to ten o'clock.
Yes.
On that very topic. Things have got to change in in move in the way of outcome, outcomes. Yeah, we'll still have inputs because, you know, you get revenue on 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 inputs and so forth, but but how we're going to move to that outcomes base is going to, going to change the way we do business dramatically.
Yeah.
And we're not the only ones, but it's not going to wait. It's not going to be phased in. The word is from the commissioner is that this plan is, we're moving in, we're starting next fall.
Yes.
So, we're going to have to learn the four corners of the agreement of the, of the commission plan to refinance, and it's, it's, we're waiting for the final, the debt, with the devil in all in the details and everything else at this point. Wait for it to go through the legislative session, and we're going to have to act now.
Yes, yes. So, definitely a lot of changes, a lot of out-of-the-box thinking, like the idea that, you know, if we were going to continue to add a class campaign, the challenge is that we may not, by compliance and state statute, we may not be able to find it, fund it through our operating budget. So, we need to think about how else can we do the same thing? So, more to come on that, definitely, more, more thinking around those ideas. Okay? All right, so moving right along. All right, professional development. Ms. Dr. Helkum, yes?
Thank you. HERF funding has provided us with the opportunity to offer faculty expert training and online delivery of instruction. In March of 2020, all faculty had to convert to an online environment of their courses. Many faculty were already experts, but others had never taught in an online environment. We never want to be in that situation again should COVID reemerge or we have a weather event, hurricane, et cetera. This funding provides us with the ability to prepare faculty and staff to continue operations of teaching classes if the college should close temporarily because of one of the events mentioned earlier. Our e-learning director, Janet Camps, has worked diligently to provide expert workshops and trainings. We have an upgraded faculty professional development room with updated equipment such as laptops, keyboards, and ACU system. She has worked with colleagues who are experts in their fields from other companies or institutions to provide certified trainings in small groups and invited speakers for larger groups. A part-time worker has also been hired to assist in these trainings. One example of a workshop being offered just this week is by a professor at Texas State University, who's experienced in teaching online and crafting high-quality online courses. And that person will work more individually with students, I'm sorry, faculty in breakout ramps. Just since January of 2022, in collaboration with e-learning, there's been at least thirty-nine professional development activities for faculty and staff that have been offered. Examples of these activities include the Texas Distance Learning Conference, Online Learning Consortium, or OLC, Advanced Teaching Certificate, OLC Instructional Design Certificates, OLC Master Series, Small Group Intensive Professional Development for New Online Courses, Online Technical Training Course, Canvas Topic Courses such as Inspired Leadership, Interactive Syllabi, Student Engagement Strategies, and Small Group Discussions with Specialists. In addition to e-learning, the Faculty Professional Development Committee has and is working to acquire special speakers for sessions. Faculty also have had the opportunity to develop courses to be shared with their colleagues and for the department to use for new people who have not taught online before. The Nurse Education Department has developed numerous courses to be shared. We have faculty members who serve as mentors, who work with their colleagues. Training modules are in development. So, our professional development is in progress and continuing. We need to do this in a continual basis. For new people, we constantly have new faculty coming on board each year. So, those faculty that received the certification are in a good position to help their new colleagues. Overall, providing faculty with the tools that they need to enhance the online delivery system produces a more successful student. And so, we have developed the infrastructure to do more of our professional development training. So, we're in a much better place than we were in March of 2020, thanks to the HERF funding. And like I said, we are continuing in the process till the end of the grant, and hopefully we will be able to continue more robust professional training after the ending of the grant. Are any questions? Okay, Dr. Lee, he'll discuss the technology piece.
Good afternoon. IT has spent six-point-two-million dollars of HERF funding, of which one-hundred percent is encumbered and less than three-and-a-half percent remains to be paid, awaiting delivery of equipment or software. The funding has afforded the college greater flexibility in delivering instruction, provided round-the-clock technical and student support capabilities, and expanded our ability to perform its business function remotely, all in a safer online environment. If you recall, this funding was allocated to the four categories as depicted on the slide and the percentages as indicated. The bulk of the funding went to cybersecurity network services, where we have expanded the college's network bandwidth from one to ten gigabit to handle more connections and to mitigate interruptions as we moved all instructional and business functions online. But in doing so, we've also increased our exposure to cyber threats with the increased number of connected devices such as remote desktops, laptops, tablets, smartphones, smartwatches, and printers, which, when connected to our network, are classified as endpoints, each now a potential entry point for a cyber criminal, as those devices may not be compliant with the school's security requirements with updated security patches or OSs. HERF funding has allowed the college to acquire and install advanced preemptive threat detection tools that go beyond traditional authentication protocols, antiviruses, firewalls that keep threats out, to a system that monitors all those devices connected networks for threats that now come from within, with the capability to detect suspicious online behavior, file changes, abnormal access patterns through the use of machine learning that can trigger the initial intervention to neutralize or isolate those threats for analysis and remediation by our IT staff. During this period, email became a critical tool for everyday communications between students, faculty, and staff. But this is also a popular attack vector among threat actors, trying to steal sensitive data such as social security numbers, employee data, bank information, or simply to hold them for ransom. The college has now installed and now conferring best-in-class email security solution to prevent, detect, and respond to email-based threats such as spam, phishing, malware, business, and email compromise attacks. Our entire data system is supported by a robust backup and disaster recovery system, partly funded by HERF. To complete this category, laptops were purchased and provided to staff so that the entirety of businesses, financial aid, and advising can be functioned, performed remotely. For remote learning technology, we have purchased hundreds of laptops for students without adequate computers so they can access their online classes or to attend classes remotely. remotely. Additional hotspots were installed throughout the various campuses to increase Wi-Fi accessibility. We also provide faculty with laptops for them to transform their current classes for remote delivery or to support hybrid courses. Many of our classrooms have had their cameras and microphones upgraded or refreshed to improve both video and sound quality to allow students to see and hear more clearly for better class participation, while other classrooms have now received their first installation of these devices to be capable of remote delivery in the future. In addition, we've installed eight conferencing systems to deliver synchronous remote classroom instructions for credit, dual-credit, workforce, continuing education, and staff training classes. In the area of virtual student support, to provide 24/7 on-demand help, the college installed and configured two AI-technology-powered chatbot systems that promote persistence and success. For hardware, software, or LMS questions, we have Black Belt Help. For student engagement and communication, we are currently configuring Ocelot to provide technology-assisted help on questions dealing with enrollment, financial aid, advising, and important deadlines. Both systems can be, can connect students to live technicians or advisors during normal working hours. Finally, in virtual desktops, we use Adobe Sign to conduct complete business transactions where signing documents and collecting signatures is completed online and legal, such as in processing financial aid or scholarship documents, or to document signer workflows to improve tracking and audibility of business processes as found in the grant proposal process, travel requests, and expense reimbursements. In the purchase office, Bonfire E-Procurement, when completely implemented, will allow streamlined tracking and approval for price-only bidding, as well as to simplify the complex request for proposal process by replacing traditional paper-based vendor submissions and evaluation sheets with interactive electronic-based documentation and guided workflow. In summary, HERF has afforded the college greatly enhanced technology capability to perform its primary function, to provide instruction and perform all of its normal business and student support functions remotely in a more secure and safe environment. Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Lee.
Health, safety, facility enhancements, $2.7 million spent. We're almost complete with all these projects. We've got purchase orders issued. We've got some last emergency generators that help support IT that are in place, getting in place to be complete by the end of the calendar year. So what we've worked on are several different projects that improve the safety of our faculty, staff, students, and visitors. We've been putting in place touchless water fountains and restroom fixtures throughout the district. We've improved the indoor air quality with ionizers that work not just against the COVID virus, but also just against the overall indoor air quality. We've purchased personal protective equipment supplies, disinfectant supplies, and dividers. We've installed outdoor furniture, so we have outdoor gathering spaces. And this last piece is critical about the emergency generators that IT had identified as shortfall and their wireless coverage, and we're installing these two emergency generators, one at the CED and one at the Windward Campus. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Travis.
Okay, Madam Chair, Mr. President, and members of the board, that concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you very much, and again, apologize for hijacking your presentation on the enrollment questions. I was just trying, meaning the marketing questions, I was just trying to understand.
Wonderful ideas, thank you.
All right, we will move into our college president's report. As you can see on this agenda, we are report-heavy today because we are action-light, so we're doing lots of reports today. We're going to start with understanding our SAC COC substantive change process. Mr. Dr. Eskimia.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. On October 2nd through the 5th, we hosted a SAC COC representatives, a group of representatives for an in-person, in-person visit to confirm findings on prior virtual visits. The previous visits were in October of 2020 for the reaffirmation of accreditation, reaffirmation of accreditation for, that occurred, let me see, on November 2021 for the substantive change visit for the BSN program. All that to say is they came face, they finally got them on campus face-to-face for a reaffirmation and final step in Level Two certification. That was a very big deal that occurred, and it was very quiet, but it was, it was a small group, led by our SAC COC Vice President, Vice President, Dr. Mike Hofer, and the Chair of our Reaffirmation Review Committee, Jane McGuire. They spent a couple of full days here, meeting with faculty and staff and students. At the conclusion of their visit, they were very impressed with everything, and they just had to come and, in their words, use a, or have a perfunctory, albeit obligatory visit, visit to, to, to make the final steps in that level change. That being said, we expect from the broader picture for, to be hosting another SAC COC team here in 2026, '27, of the academic year, '26, '27, as part of our fifth-year reporting. And so that'll be the midpoint for our decennial visit that'll come five years after that. And so heads up there. It was a real, that was a big deal, Level Two status for, for, for a community college is a big deal, and rumor has it, we'll be coming back to you with some other ideas because some people can't sit still as if we just hadn't, anyway, I'm just kidding. Our faculty and staff are very eager, and they've got some great ideas, and I already have them on my desk. I'll be coming back to you for, for other Level Two discussions. Also, as you have noticed, you know, being here in the, the Oso Creek Campus is a big deal, and not only here, but I want to talk a little bit about the accommodations that Delmar College makes for our very most important democratic process, by way, being our, this being Tuesday, Election Day, and the like. I want y'all to know that we do this every election cycle. We're great partners with, with, with the, with the county, and we have four sites open until 7:00 PM today. Obviously, here at the Oso Creek Campus, at our Culinary Arts Building, up on, down on the south side, as you walked in, maybe you may have seen all the election signs and everything going on. We also have, continue to have elections, both early election, early voting and, and regular voting today at the Heritage Campus, Heritage Campus, the Heldenfelds Administration Building. Out at our Windward Campus, we have elections being held, voting being held, rather, at the Emergency Training Building, otherwise known as the FEMA Dome, and then also at the Center for Economic Development, Room 106, also known as our regular boardroom. Yeah, I, I make this point to, to let everybody know that, you know, taxpayers and voters and the like have voted for us over the years and have been very, very supportive. We are the community's college, and I just want y'all to know that we participate in every which way we can. Augie and I, and Jessica Alinees, and Ms. McDonald and others do everything we can to, to integrate into the community and provide those services. So I think it's a very proud moment today, and as being, being a part of our democratic process, process is very important. Next subject is the Fall Commencement. So the Fall 2022 Commencement Ceremony will be held on Friday, December 16th, at 7:00 PM, at the American Bank Center. We are working on finding a keynote speaker. I think we may have one, but we'll hold off till next, next board meeting right before, or I'll make an announcement just here in a little bit, in a few coming days to talk about that, but it'll be at the American Bank Center, it'll be a big graduation, so get ready. Let me see, two more updates, really update here on the Oso Creek Campus. You know, it is kind of a, we're, we're almost done with construction. The Oso Creek is entering the final phases of construction and is on track to be fully open, construction-wise, as well as, as, as much as we can instructionally-wise, instructional-wise, for the spring 2023 semester. The STEM and the Culinary Arts Buildings are fully open and had classes this semester. What I mean by fully open is construction-wise. We still have some restrictions, in some cases, we're not fully open that way with our full inventory of courses, but stay tuned. Those will be ratcheting up as we move ahead. The temporary certificate of occupancy of the Administration Building was issued October 26th. That's the building, or Administration Building on that other side of the pond. Furniture has been moved in, those sorts of things. I walked the whole campus yesterday. There, there are scant few, but albeit there's a small team, a small contingent out there in operating, receiving students. Construction of the pond, the water feature, is progressing with some delays due to recent rains, kind of ironic, our water pond is slow because of water, but it's coming. And Regent Goddard said, I don't know if there'll be any fish, or someone was asking, maybe there's a Regent Adama that was asking about the fish. I, I, I'm going to reserve that for, for John. Two bus stops are under construction on the campus by the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Transportation Authority. That's, where you see the black, the black felt outline just a little west of here down Yorktown, that's where the big bus stop's going to be. It's going to be a big one, and, and so that's going to, they'll, they'll be moving things forward and scraping the ground and doing all those other things, doing site work prep and so forth. Also, the City of Corpus Christi Police Training Academy has been advertised for construction bids. I just spoke to a couple of folks yesterday, so they're going out for bids again, and we'll, we'll get back to you as far as that goes, because that'll be coming shortly thereafter. Finally, spring 2023 registration for classes began yesterday. Several registration events are being held this month and next month for the, for all three campuses to help students with the process, and I hope my son Benjamin is, is listening because he needs to register for the spring semester. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Dr. Eskimia?
I, I have one item, and I missed it. I apologize, I stepped out. It was during the enrollment visit, and I just want to bring this up. It, it goes back to the enrollment report, and I think, Patricia, if you can come back up here, I think we, we may do a redo on a, so, the, the, yeah, let's go and pull this up. I, I have never done this, but it's important because I do want to bring up a bit of clarity, and I know we're running, trying to, Patricia, I texted Patricia since to see how she explained this while I stepped out, I apologize. So we had 10,000 change, 10,000 and something credit students enroll for the first part of fall. I just want to, I just want to reemphasize in case it wasn't clear.
That, this, that flex number is, is from, that we're getting from the summer, but the flex number that, that's not represented here, that is too soon to get represented on the spring slide, is that for second, fall second eight weeks, we have a...
Second eight weeks of fall semester. So these are, these are students that are here.
Currently enrolled.
And currently enrolled.
We have 2,486 students. So that metric will get reported with whatever we have for spring '22.
So, so, yeah, and, and I don't want to say they don't care, but right now I don't really care about that, that, that report necessarily. I'm just trying to make sure we understand that there's a, there's a big number ebbing and flowing here, and it's 10,000, there's, there's 279 from summer that are being counted in, and so there's, there's, there's all that, there's 10,000, and then we're just talking on the credit side.
Right, so, you know, the, the, the 10,000 for...
Go back to the next slide real quick.
The spring?
No, 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 well, the flex, the, the, the summer, the 2,400, where are they? The 2,400 second eight weeks.
That, they're not, they're not represented there.
That's my point.
They're not represented there yet.
That's my point. There's a whole other segment in the current semester.
We're currently serving 12,486 students, although that's not represented there because the 2,486 is what we, what we'll report in spring '23.
So when I reviewed this Sunday, I said, make a mental note, and when did Mark step out, when y'all were, when y'all were talking about this?
So I guess...
There's a bigger number there in...
What I'm curious about, and I think I've said this before, we always want to report to the state what the state wants us to report in the format in which they want us to report it.
Right.
Fine. What makes sense to us, and as we're moving to outcomes-based, one of the, one of the pipeline questions is going to be what's enrollment, how many semester credit hours or people enroll, contact hours, whatever we want that to be so that we can track our progression and know, are we reaching the milestones we need to reach to, for the outcomes to be what they need to be? So maybe at a, as the board thinks about our retreat for next spring, that can be one of the conversations that we have, are what are the data points that we need as a board to understand the pipeline and understand how are we going to reach the outcomes? So we can continue to report to the state what they want in the format they want, but what we want to hear is what's our, what's, what are the data points that, that mean we're progressing? And that's, that's the conversation, as opposed to parsing over when we get to count eight weeks versus flex versus a Maymester, whatever, that, that's what gets challenging for us.
That's why I said y'all don't care. That's exactly what I was referring to, and so as we, as we get ready...
We care.
Yeah, I know you care. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm being facetious here. It's, it's a, there's a bigger number of students that we're moving through. I just don't want y'all to leave thinking, oh, my gosh, enrollment's down, and it's this way, but, but, but is it really? It may have started that way. The indicators that aren't being reflected here is that, is that the students are finally starting to come back, because that 2,400 numbers, that 2,408, 24, what was it?
2,486.
2,486 students is, is actually a, a, a step up. I mean, it's, it's a step up.
It's a, it's a, last spring, we had 1719.
Last, okay, yeah, 1719. Last year this time, in that number of students in the second eight weeks, we had 1,700 students enrolling in the second eight weeks of fall. This time, we have 2,400.
2,486.
2,486. That's what's not being reflected in here, and that's, that's the point that I want to make. There, there's, there's a movement, there is a movement towards, I think, students are starting to come out of their, more credit students are starting to come out of the COVID fog and so forth, and they're starting to come back to school. So that number was missed there. I just don't want y'all to leave with that 10,000 number in your head, and that's not including the CE students, okay? So here we have 10,000 in the first part of fall. Okay, some of those moved over and took the second eight weeks and whatever, and that number is now 24. And then on top of that is a big CE number that you all reviewed, that I probably missed too, and I apologize for that. So my point is, getting back to exactly what you said, those numbers are in there sprinkled throughout, it's the way we're reporting to you all that's still, the way the state expects it, and we're going to get away from that. We're going to, what I'm trying to do is change the way the state expects to read it, and just stay tuned on that. Again, many more students than, than is being reflected on these numbers. I, I just had to make that point. Madam Chair, I apologize for reviewing that, but I thought that was important. Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Dr. Eskimia? So move on to our pending business items that are in our packet. You'll see that in December, our, some of the reports are going to include our internal auditors will come back to us, we'll hear our foundation annual update, we'll begin to talk about student charges, we'll make that decision on student tuition fees until February, but we begin to have that discussion in December, and we'll have our professional contract review. We'll obviously also be doing our, saying goodbye to our outgoing board members, and we'll be giving the oath of office to our incoming board members at that December meeting as well. We'll talk a little bit about, about that in calendaring. Not yet. And then we're not sure if we're going to do the strategic plan, the coordinating board strategic plan update in December, or wait till February, kind of depends on how the rest of the December calendar shakes out. We do want to begin having the board annual self-evaluation and retreat conversation in that February timeframe, February, March, so we'll be looking at kind of the start of our board governance biennium in the spring, and looking at that opportunity for our self-evaluation and board retreat as well. Any questions on our pending items? If not, we will move on to our consent agenda. We have three items on our consent agenda, approval of minutes, acceptance of investment, and financials. Those are provided to the board in advance. Is there any item that needs to be removed for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda items as presented? Thank you, Mr. Garza, second? Is there a second to that motion to accept? Dr. Villarreal, thank you very much. Any questions on the motion? Any public comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. We do not have any regular action items for today, but we do have a closed session, so I'm going to ask the board stay here for closed session and... I'm going to ask the board stay here for closed session and ask the rest of the room to clear yourself out, and while you do that quietly, I'll read the closed session language. Under Texas Government Code 551.071, regarding the pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer with possible discussion and action in open session, and the seeking of legal advice from counsel on pending legal or contemplated matters or claims with possible discussion and action in open session, and under Texas Government Code 551.074, regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissable public office, officer, or employee with possible discussion and action in open session, and the time is 3:30 PM. We need to take a... Thank you. The board has returned from closed session at 3:47 PM. We have no action items coming out of closed session. Looking at our calendar for the remainder of the month, again, we are hosting Dr. Harrison Keller, Commissioner of Higher Education, tomorrow here at the Oso Creek Campus for that South Texas Regional Workshop. We do have our scholarship reception next Tuesday, the 15th, on the Windward Campus, and so if you have not RSVP'd to that, please let Delia and Mary McQueen know. And then we do have two regents who are prepared to canvass the election, Delia, we know who those two regents are who are going to canvass. Are we looking for volunteers?
Not yet. If we get two...
So do we have two volunteers who are available to canvass elections on the 18th? I'm available, if there's one other person, Dr., Mr. Garza? Okay. Anybody else who wants to show up, you're welcome to join us.
On the 18th.
On the 18th, and that's at noon? What time are we going to do that, at noon, Delia?
Yes, at noon.
Okay. And so if anybody else is available, please let Delia know. In December, we have our Coordinating Board Leadership Conference in Austin. It starts, Delia just sent a link out to the regents, it starts early morning on the 7th, you'd have to go in the afternoon of the 6th, and it starts early morning on the 7th through lunchtime on the 8th. And then on the 13th, we will have our board meeting back here. We'll do a luncheon prior. Actually, I'm not sure the exact timing, what we've typically done in the past is to do kind of an outgoing recognition, allow our outgoing regents to bring a significant other or, or guest with them, and the same thing for our incoming regents, to bring a friend or family who are going to be attending with them as well. So we will do the official swearing-in at 1:00 PM, and I think we'll look at whether or not we do something early, we've got to coordinate that final schedule, we'll do that very soon. And then our season's celebration and fall graduation will be on December the 16th, with winter break on December 21st, we're already talking about winter break. All right, any other questions or comments?
The seasonal celebration will be in this room?
Oh, it will be in this room. Well, so we'll have our, and with our students cooking? No. We have great, great opportunities to show off our students, our culinary students in the future. And again, on the 16th, yes. Season celebration is at 11:00, and then graduation is that night at 7:00 PM. We will not have a regular board meeting in January, but there is Community College Day in Austin on the 26th, and included in that, the Community College Association of Texas Trustees is offering a new regent orientation that we will offer to our newly-elected regents on the 27th up in Austin as well. With that, we are finished with our meeting and adjourn at 3:50 PM. Thank you all.